Jessica, will you have anything to share?
No, thanks.
Okay.
Hey Bob. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I was just, okay, I was just doing a sound check. Thank you. About with the funeral expenses, we also are helping out with. Mr. Short, this is Chair Ontiveris. My clock shows four o'clock, so if you would like to begin the study session, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will go ahead and begin. Can you hear me all right? Okay. Okay, Madam. Okay, thanks, thanks Jessica. I'm having some issues with my microphone tonight, so yeah, we'll go ahead and get started. First case is CP nineteen zero four three, it's actually an extension of this conditional use permit for a memorial forest, which is also considered to be a cemetery by the code or zoning ordinance. It is, it was on five parcels now, those parcels have been combined and we have corrected that for the notice into one parcel and is located up on, it's about two and a half miles east of US Highway eighty in our North Heart Prairie Road. This is Melissa's case, Melissa, you want to go ahead and tell us about this particular case?
Thank you Bob, Commissioners, so this is being submitted actually as an extension of the use permit that was approved back in two thousand for the Memorial Forest, and I'm going to go ahead and share screen so we can look at the site plan. The applicant has requested that they, we extend the approval of the use permit so the phasing can, can essentially be pushed further out into year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, there are some slight modifications to the site plan. So it's not a, a complete extension, but we wanted to ask the commission about whether or not this would need to be actually a modification to the CUP, the, the modifications are pretty minor, but we wanted to bring those to your attention in light of the extension request, so this letter here pretty much just describes how the conditions of the existing CUP are being addressed and when those are being addressed. We, I'm going to go ahead and scroll down to the site plan because it's color-coded as far as what would be improvements that are planned for this year, next year and beyond. There are really just very minor changes in relation to constructing parking, one of the major changes or rather differences is that the the cabin or it, that is existing site has not yet been remodeled, that is intended to be a visitor center offices and also sales office, so in the meantime, sales are being conducted in a tent and those are, the permit for that has been issued as a temporary use permit, so you can see here color-coded what would be phased in, in future years. So there's not a large change to the actual site plan, there is one memorial location, this Arizona Nurses Association Memorial is being proposed to be added, that was previously a smaller or rather a larger memorial, so this is something that they would be requesting to be added this year to honor nurses who worked during the pandemic. And then you can see here some of the phasing, some of the parking has been installed already completed in twenty twenty-one and then additional parking would be completed this year. They've submitted a request to continue with a temporary use permit to continue with the sales in the existing tent and then they're adding things like a generator and heating to the, to the tent as well as some composting restrooms. The cabin remodel is planned for twenty twenty-three along with the, the access to that cabin. There is additional planned parking here and then there's some other parking that is planned for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four construction year, I believe the applicant is with us tonight to answer further questions. So these changes seem fairly minor, it's mostly about phasing with some additional changes and we would ask for the commission's feedback on whether or not this could be processed as simply as an extension of the use permit or if it seems that it's something that you would want to have come back at a public hearing. And that's all.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Shaw, this is Chair Ontiveris. Just to recap, the, the modifications or the, the minor changes would be limited to the remodel of the cabin and the addition of the Arizona Nurses Association Memorial?
The, the cabin was always intended to be remodeled, it's just that that's being phased at a later time now. It would just be addition of the nurses' memorial.
Oh, okay, okay, I, I'll just go ahead and speak for myself on this, if it's limited to that, I personally do not see a reason to have it come before a public hearing, but I do want the other Commissioners to weigh in on that.
I'm in complete agreement, I don't see any reason it needs to come back to public hearing.
Yeah, I'll agree with that also. Both Tiana and Chair Ontiveris has summed it up for me as well.
This is Commissioner Best.
I'm on board with that too.
Okay, so then Ms. Shaw, why don't we just proceed with this case being on the consent agenda for next month?
Thank you very much.
And do any, do any Commissioners, if the applicant is present, do any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant, if so, raise your hand or unmute. And I'm not seeing any, so with that, Mr. Short, why don't we go ahead and continue the study session, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, let's go into the next case and as, as Madam Chair indicated, that case would be on the consent agenda. It means you can just simply approve it by approving the consent agenda or you can pull it off if you have questions about it. This next case would be on the public hearings, this is case number AM twenty zero zero three and it is an amendment to the Coconial County zoning ordinance. I'm not going to go into a big description, I'll let Melissa do that, this is her case. And it basically is to add the renewable energy ordinance and everything that goes along with that, like definitions and some other things, so Melissa, you go ahead and describe this.
Thank you Bob and Chair Ontiveros, this is, as Bob mentioned, the actual public hearing item to amend our zoning ordinance to include the performance standards for the renewable energy projects that we've been working on as, as most of you know now for nearly two years, so this public hearing case would specifically amend three sections of the zoning ordinance, chapter three, chapter five and chapter six. We've, we've brought this forward to you at several study sessions and a retreat. There hasn't been a lot of change since you last had some detailed description about what's in the ordinance, but I would like to update you about a few things. We did conduct a virtual open house between February ninth and February sixteenth, so it was available for a week and we had a one-hour live session that went along with that, about thirty people attended, a combination of staff and advisory group members and then some other interested citizens, so we did get some comments back from the open house and the there were, there were not a lot of comments, I think we had seven comments total, they were thoughtful comments and the advisory group met last week on the eighteen to look at those comments and made some recommendations, the comments were, were primarily addressing notification distancing and making sure that the there was a lot of wide-range notification for these types of projects and then questions about the visual impacts and audible noise limits, that sort of thing, so there, they, the comments were we felt that they could be addressed by what's in the current ordinance and then a few, a few changes, we've also had some some discussion about decommissioning and the financial securities that the county would want to secure in order to ensure that a site that was no longer operating could be appropriately, appropriately removed and decommissioned, so there's, there's language in the draft that we are, we're still working on finalizing, but we will certainly have that detail for you in the staff report when that comes to you next month and just another quick update on that we have been, we have a few meetings scheduled individually with Board of Supervisors, there wasn't room on their work session agendas to have another update, so we're trying to bring this to the Board of Supervisor members individually to give them a briefing on as well, so that's all I had unless anyone had specific questions about that item.
Commissioner Ruggles, go ahead.
Yes, unfortunately, I was unable to or because of time constraints on my part to get one, one comment to Melissa on this and that is with the use of one word in the ordinance proposed and that is the use of the term expert. Typically, in a case like this, we have used licensed professional engineer and I would like to suggest that that term be used as a plant expert and I would remind everyone that in my opinion something that brought this to my attention was the fact that the cyber ninjas touted themselves as election audit experts and I will leave it at that.
You know, I'm going to have to concur with Commissioner Ruggles' comments about the licensed professional engineer and the reason that I am in favor of that is because when you have a licensed professional, you have a third-party objective body that has said, yes, this individual meets their credentials and that is why I personally would prefer to have Commissioner Ruggles' suggestion taken into account. And, and the reason being is I, anyone can call themselves an expert. And so I think that to have that definition of what is accepted, licensed professional, we got a license and now we know you're qualified. And I, and I will leave it at that. Commissioner Best, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I concur with that and one thing that we got into that I think where we saw some progress made in the last couple of weeks was Native American cultural input in, into these projects. Perhaps Melissa could send around a couple of the links that we saw. But the Nature Conservancy, Shippo State Historic Preservation Office in the state are just seem to have momentum moving forward to make it a little easier to contact tribal authorities and get input into these projects hopefully pre-application so that we don't have a, an applicant coming into town putting a lot of, you know, reading the ordinance complying with the ordinance and then finding out that there are Native American sensitivities that we're not aware of. And so I think we, that, that had been something that concerned me and I think we made some progress. And another thing is, Melissa, if you could get us the the proposed document pretty early in the game, I'd like to read it one more time and just make sure that I know you're probably rolling over now, but your eyes are probably rolling, but we've seen it many times. But I'd like to go over it one more time, I, I think this is really an important document, I, and I, I have a feeling that it will be used not just by Coconial County, but it'll be a resource for many counties if it's as good as I think it is. Thank you very much.
They, thank you Commissioner Best and Ms. Shaw, I also am going to say that I concur with Commissioner Best's comments that if you could get it to the Commissioner sooner on, you know, I know that your plate is full, but at such a point in time, if, if you can get it to us earlier rather than later, I also would like to have it for the same reason Commissioner Best has stated, and I'm also interested in looking at the final language for the decommissioning that on, is, is being drafted now, so thank you, thank you for that. Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised, do you have anything else? Um, okay, Commissioner, Ms. Shaw, your hand is raised.
Yes, thank you Chair Ontiveros, I just wanted to clarify, would you want the staff report to come along with the draft of the ordinance?
Okay, I personally don't need the staff report, I'm looking on what I would like and, and this is just my personal preference, would just be to have the draft to look at that. On Commissioner Best, would you please weigh in, what were you looking for when you asked Ms. Shaw for this?
Well, I, I think there's a lot here. And we've got a lot of great minds on this commission and I hope everybody will really dig in. We've got a lot of points of view and, but it takes time, you know, this is I don't know, is it a twenty-page document or sixteen-page documents? And it's dense, so it really, it's going to take some time for everybody, this, this is not, not, you know, a night before type thing. It's going to take some time to get into it, but I, I really think if everybody looked it over and we, you know, just have a final real careful look at it from everybody will, will produce a great document.
Right, and, and Commissioner Best, let me ask you this, to answer Ms. Shaw's question, she's wondering if we would like to have just the draft or the staff report as well? And I indicated that what I'm looking for earlier rather than later is the draft. I'm, and so I'm reaching out to get your thoughts on that.
I concur, just, the draft is fine, we don't, I, I don't need a, a staff report.
Okay, thank you, and yeah, Commissioner Best, I currently have the one on the last one that I read through and it is fourteen pages, so if there are additions, we know that it is at least a fourteen-page document, so okay, all right, Ms. Shaw, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, all right, Mr. Short?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we'll move on to the next case that is also an amendment, it's AM twenty-one zero zero two and this is an amendment to the Coconial County zoning ordinance related to the flood management overlay zone and instead of going into a lot of comments on that, this is something long to read. Actually, in this case, both Melissa Shaw and John Carr, I, I have included them in the noticing as a representative because Melissa will be handling a lot of the case in terms of the way it works with the zoning ordinance, so Melissa, would you be able to describe what changes are made here and then I'll let John describe the more technical details of the flood, floodplain changes?
Thank you Bob, um and I don't see John with us right now, but the, as the commission knows, the floodplain management overlay zone is currently lives, if you will, in the zoning ordinance and the Arizona Department of Water Resources has contacted the county and requested that there be some amendments and along with this are recommending that the floodplain management ordinance be a standalone document, not within the zoning ordinance, so that is what this case is intended to achieve is to remove the floodplain management overlay zone from the ordinance and add a reference then to that as a separate document. My understanding is we do have the the Coconial, what would be called in the Coconial County floodplain ordinance would become a standalone document approved by the Flood Control District and that's on that is scheduled for a public hearing which would be, I believe, in, in May, so that is the extent of what you'll see with this case number there, the floodplain management overlay zone is quite long, so it would change make our zoning ordinance shorter and change the numbering in it, so that's the main impact that you'll see.
Commissioner Best?
Thank you, would this change the way we deal with floodplains because we do you know, staff reports on floodplain issues and we do take those into account as we work on cases?
So the we would still have floodplain regulations and they would apply to any cases that are in a a flood zone, our zoning ordinance would refer to this, so if there was a case that was in a flood zone, then you would still have that analysis brought forward to you. But it wouldn't, it's not something that the commission then would need to, in terms of this change to the zoning ordinance, it would not sit in the zoning ordinance itself, but if there was a case that had floodplain impacts, then that would be part of the analysis, if that answers your question.
Okay, so it sounds like business as usual, but a little bit of a reorganization.
Very much that.
As far as boots on the ground at the, at the commission, we still take that into account.
That's right, if there are impacts and then the, it would become a standalone ordinance similar to how the subdivision ordinance is separate, but.
Thank you.
Okay, I can add to that and I, I'm sorry, I was distracted a little bit, my phone rang, I had not turned off my phone, but not sure if Melissa described that most counties in the state have a standard-type floodplain ordinance and we haven't had that, so that's why we're doing this, we're basically moving it to its own section. But Commissioner Best, when it comes to things like, for example, in the comp plan, we have policies related to floodplains and I've seen many of those where you had to make decisions about that, so the commission still will be making decisions about that. It seems like this ordinance has kind of been to be frank, kind of in the wrong place because we haven't used it a lot, you know, it, it really is more of an engineering ordinance, so I think this is a good move for it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short. Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised, did you have anything additional? Before we, okay.
No, I, I just have poor hand-raising discipline.
Yeah, okay, you know what, no, you know what, I'm not judging, okay, there's no stupid questions, so no one laugh. I can't figure out how to do the raised hand, can someone, Commissioner Best, you, you seem to be very much on it, can you give me some direction?
Yeah, go to full screen, so, so you're in full screen and then go to, at the bottom, there's a tag called reactions with a little happy face. Hit the happy face and you get the option to hit raise hand, so don't, I think if you if you just hit the symbol of the hand, it does not come up, but if you hit the word raise hand, the, the words raise hand, it does come up.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
You know, I, I will work, I will work on it later, I, I thought I was in the, on full screen, but I, I, I'll work on it, but thank you for that, thank you for that beginning direction. Okay, Mr. Short, let's go ahead and move to case number three on the study session, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, this case is Kelly's case. This is case number CP zero zero three, it's a request for conditional This is case number CP 003. It's a request for conditional use permit, uh, which was previously getting some feedback here, which is previously CP 11-059. Can someone mute their mic? Okay, um, anyway, it, um, it, it has come back. It, it is required to be a hearing case because it was, the renewal came in late, hopefully for the sake of, of this lady, Ms. Parker, this will be the last time she has to renew this case. But go ahead, Kelly. I see you have your PowerPoint up.
Thank you, Bob, and good afternoon, commissioners. I do have to say I have some pets behind me. So if you hear strange sounds, please let me know if it gets distracting and I'll move them. So this is CUP 2203. Um, as Bob stated, this was previously CUP 1159. Uh, this is a request for an eight-by-40 metal storage container. It's on a 9.4, 9.54 acre parcel in the G-zone in Red Lake. It's about three miles west of Highway 64 and about half of the properties in the vicinity have been developed. Here I have an aerial photo. You can see the home and the parcel right here. Um, and you can also see the photo from the last staff report of the metal storage container. It's been painted to match the house in a natural color. And I will put the conditions of the past resolution up here for you to view. But that is pretty much it for this case unless anyone has any questions or comments.
I'm not seeing any Miss Beam. So Bob, let's go ahead and go to number four, please.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go ahead and share my screen. This is my case. This is, this is a ZZ 22001. It's a request for a zone change from CG 10,000. That's the commercial general 2,000 square foot minimum park.
Mr. Mr. Short, I see.
Per acre. So the parcels look, yes.
Okay, Mr. Short, you're kind of coming in and out.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Go ahead and proceed. I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so I will go ahead and go through the PowerPoint here. This, uh, as I said, ZZ 2201. The request is for a zone change from the commercial zone to the RM 10A zone. And the reason for the request is that the topography is really steep on this site. And I'll show you a, a, a photo in a minute. The access is not very good to the highway. It's kind of not a very good place for commercial development. In fact, the applicant's already gone to some of his neighbors and they did not support some of his ideas for commercial uses. So he has decided to come to the county for his own change and staff is not required a site plan in this case. Uh, because it looks appropriate just to allow for the zone change and allow to be, it to be developed under the zoning standards that apply to this zone. This is a vicinity map showing the for, the Forest Lakes area and the subject property right there on Highway 260. This is a commercial area right here. And what we've had in Forest Lakes over the years, if you have been here for a while, commissioners, you'll remember this. We've had cases where the commercials on properties just weren't viable for commercial and they have changed over to residential. Some of them are already developed. And you can see some gaps in the red right in here. And that indicates places where that zone changes have occurred. This is a similar case where there's more commercial than is viable in this area. Now go ahead and show you an aerial photo. So this is Highway 260 up here and this is, I believe it's called Pond Circle. It comes down, you can see these, uh, may have, I haven't looked this up, but these may have changed from commercial in the past. They're developed with single-family housing, which is very typical. There's quite a bit of RM 10A in this area that has developed with single-family housing. And I suspect that's what will happen to subject properties. You can see it looks steeper than the other parts. It's required to have a septic system. So probably only one single unit or maybe a couple of units would be appropriate. So that's basically it for this case. Any questions from the commission?
I'm not seeing any, Mr. Short.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Shall we move on to the next case? Madam Chair, can you hear me all right?
Uh, yes, I can.
Okay, thanks. This is Zach's case. Uh, the case number is not correct on this one. Uh, this came in kind of in a hurry and we're, we're actually trying to help out the state highway the Arizona Department of Transportation to work on a highway project. And it's a temporary use permit for a batch plant associated with the highway construction project. That's, that requires a commission TUP, mission approval for these kinds of things. Uh, they did come to us kind of late, so we're working to accommodate them. Zach, go ahead and describe the case for us.
Yeah, thanks, Bob. Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning Staff. And I just wanted to show you an aerial view here. So this is the Mon's Park area. The commercial center where there are a number of different commercial uses, including some gas stations here off Pinewood Boulevard. Uh, these are the two subject properties for this batch plant use. So this triangular one and a small piece there. But basically this is, ADOT is installing some ducts, I think it's for fiber optic use in the right-of-way's on I-17 from milepost 340 to 296. And so they need to use this property here, this Arrow property. Here's the site plan for some storage. They have, um, a temporary office for meetings and a batch plant so that they can create asphalt to, um, cover up some of the trenching that they'll do for the project. So here they get their access off of Pinewood Boulevard to the north. There's a temporary office. There are some metal storage containers that hold some of the equipment that they need to use. Uh, there are also some commercial-sized trucks on the property and the batch plant on the property as well. Uh, so this use actually was initiated in October and it's only supposed to last until June of this year. And so our code enforcement officers went to the property and took some pictures here. So this is looking from the north of the property. South, you can see they just have some equipment here. Uh, this is looking near sort of the northern part of that Arrow parcel where they have some boxes here. And then they have a, a number of small piles of raw material for the batch plant. In the background here, I believe that is where they're using their temporary offices. It's an existing structure for offices that I believe is maybe not currently being used, but they're using it for this use. But, again, it's pretty temporary in nature. The area, it's not, it's just adjacent to commercial uses and some open space related to the golf course for Pinewood. So it shouldn't be too impactful and it's only for a very short period of time. They do need to pull some grading and hydrology permits. I believe there is some water that comes through the area. But other than that, it should be a very low-impact use and only last for a pretty short duration. So unless there are any questions?
Commissioner Best?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, do we have a restoration plan for this? I, I don't know how it started and I don't know what the plan is, but it is right next to the highway. Uh, you know, it's something people are going to be driving by. It's sort of a gateway to the community. And we also have the invasive weed issue. So there, there ought to be a restoration plan of some sort, I would think.
Sure, Madam Chair, Commissioner Best, they just submitted a pretty short narrative describing how the use will work and that site plan. Uh, they didn't include that they were doing any sort of restoration. I don't know if that's something that's typical for projects involved with ADOT. I almost would suspect it is. Uh, but certainly I will figure out if it is not and condition that they do some restoration related to it as well. Typically with a temporary use, uh, the, at the end, we expect it to be brought back to the condition that the property was in before the use. But I also do think that the, the property has sat in the same sort of, um, maybe it was just asphalt millings on top of it for quite a while. So that's something that I can look into for sure.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I, I mean, we can't ask for too much, but on the other hand, we want to do the best we can. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Walters.
Yes, that site has been used for a bunch of different operations with ADOT and it's been gravel and, and that. I like seeing the, the millings there because it does deter some of the weed growth, but it, it has been kind of rough for a long time. We'll just, just gravel on there. Just to answer your question, Mr. Best.
Thanks for that, Commissioner Walters.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. Ms., um, thank you, Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Short. Let's go ahead and move to the administrative renewals.
Okay, Madam Chair. We have, uh, we have two administrative, uh, renewals on the docket for next month. Uh, would you like us to speak about them particularly or just kind of go with them briefly?
Um, I think, I think just briefly, I already read them. Um, so if the commissioners don't have any questions, I think we can just kind of breeze through that.
Okay, Zach, you want to describe the first one briefly? This is Zach's case.
Fair, thanks, Bob. So this case is for a helipad in the PRD zone. So it's just at the very south portion of Foxborough Ranch Estates. And I think most of the commissioners were here for that. This was only back in 2019 when it was first approved. And I don't believe that there have been any complaints about it, uh, possibly maybe a, a noise complaint that I would definitely look into. And I know that the commission spoke at length about noise. It is pretty close to the highway. It is separated, I think, by topography from other lots. It's at the very southern portion. I can actually share a screen here. Uh, so if you're seeing this, it, this is Foxborough Ranch Estates. It's just this very southernmost parcel. And I believe it's just for the property owner, uh, their own personal use. They own some sort of helicopter company and occasionally fly back and forth from this parcel down south to their home, which I believe is in Chandler or Gilbert. But I believe the trips are relatively infrequent. I believe also possibly this is an existing flight path for other vehicles. Uh, but that's, that's all the information I have on it so far without doing a lot of research.
Okay, um, I've got a question for you, Mr. Schwartz, because it's on the administrative renewal. It means that they have complied with the conditions and that there really haven't been any, um, complaints. What I'm wondering, this is really a permanent use type of a thing. Can administratively, is it, can it be moved to just a perpetual use?
Right. So Madam Chair, this use had an initial time period, maybe just to check up on some of the conditions of approval. It's not something that the zoning, zoning ordinance requires the commission to revisit. And certainly staff was considering, um, opening it up to, uh, permanent without needing any renewals. So, uh, it's not something where we've been fully, uh, we haven't done the full research to determine whether or not there are any valid complaints that would cause it to go to the commission level, but it was submitted on time and I think probably we didn't initially see any sort of valid complaints on it. And so, uh, if that's the case, as research continues, then staff would most likely have the director sign off on it being a perpetual use.
Okay, um, the reason that I brought that up is there are just some uses that just lend themselves to being perpetual. And this is one of them, at least in my opinion. So that's why I brought it up. Um, Commissioner Best, your hand is raised.
Yeah, I, I don't remember what commission, what conditions, if any, are on this. But having a helicopter land adjacent to your property, if it happens once in a great while, is, uh, probably really fun for the kids to run out and see the helicopter. If it happens every day, it could be a nightmare. So I, I would hope that there's conditions on this so that if we make it permanent, we're not opening ourselves up to something that could be disruptive in the community. There, there, there ought to be some limitations. So I'll just leave it to your common sense and bring it back to us if you feel it's reasonable.
Okay, and Commissioner Walters?
I'm a member there and I've been there several times when the helicopters flown in. And, and what you can't determine from this, this map that's here, those two lots on the south side are the very highest lots. You can't even see the house, let alone the helicopter pad, which is, is back in behind there. It, this, it causes no interruption whatsoever to the subdivision. You don't even know what happens. I just happened to be on the adjacent lot visiting, um, one of my childhood friends when the helicopter came in. But we, we get all the traffic coming into, to the Flagstaff Airport. It comes right over Foxborough. Just my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, Commissioner Walters. All right, and Mr. Short, why don't you? Oh, I see you, Commissioner Ruggles. I apologize. I apologize.
Yes, I guess, uh, there's some benefit to being invisible sometimes, but anyway. Yeah, unfortunately, I was not able to be there when the, uh, noise, uh, or sound level readings were taken. However, I believe Commissioner Walters was and, uh, Mr. Short were there. I reviewed the numbers and, uh, I found them to be more than acceptable considering where those readings were taken. And I would agree with Commissioner Walter's assessment on this one. Also, when we, uh, insofar as going forward with an administrative renewal.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Um, okay, with that, Mr. Short, would you go ahead and continue into the Community Development Department update, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can do that. Uh, there was one more case I'll just mention briefly and that's, uh, Calvary Bible Church conditional use permit renewal. And this is a really, I'll use the word cute little church out in Blue Ridge. And we don't anticipate any issues with that. And that would be a perpetual renewal as well. We do not anticipate bringing those back for additional renewals, either one of these cases. All right, with that, let's move on to Community Development Department update. Uh, I hate to announce this, but the applicant who was offered the assistant director position has declined that position. I think there were just, uh, issues with the cost of living here. Uh, I think that was the biggest issue was the cost of living. And he finally, after much negotiation, uh, he declined the position. Uh, so we're moving forward as is right now. Uh, the, for, for COVID, we're continuing the same process, the same phase two operations. The buildings are open. People who come into buildings are required to wear a mask. When, uh, staff is away from their workstations, they're required to wear a mask. But it looks like there is a sharp decline in COVID right now. So hopefully that will, we'll be able to move on past that eventually. And the next item number three is the DOD department. And the next, uh, item number three is the Dolly Park Timberland Fernwood Area Plan Update, and I'll go ahead and let Melissa talk about that.
Thank you, Bob. So we are continuing, uh, with the Area Plan Committee to review the goals and policies. We have tentatively scheduled a second open house for March 31st. Um, I'm not sure that that will, that that date will hold at this point. Um, so we have a meeting tomorrow night with the committee, and we are continuing to uh, move along in the review of the goals and policies and to draft the plan. So we will keep you updated as I get closer to an open house and public hearings.
That's all. Um, let's go to item number four.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the county is in partner with the Route 66 Brownfield EPA Grant. The grant is managed by NACOG. Property owners are being solicited for projects. Uh, please contact Melissa Shaw if you have questions. Do you have any updates on that, Melissa?
No new updates, just, uh, to remind everybody, there's still funding available, uh, for the sites.
Um, you know, you know what? I just got a, a quick question. Ms. Shaw, is this, um, being well taken advantage of, if you will?
So in Coconino County, I think we have, um, two sites that have been nominated and that are, we, we're currently, um, having assessments done. This is a coalition of five partners. So it kind of varies. Um, it's City of Flagstaff, uh, Coconino County, Yavapai County, Camp Verde, and I believe, oh my gosh, I'm, I'm, my apologies, I'm forgetting the fifth partner. So it, it, it kind of varies between, um, municipality in terms of how much is being, uh, spent. But we are, I mean, the, the grant total was for $600,000. You know, we do have additional funds to spend, and we would like to have more nominations uh, for Coconino County, but a- again, it's being spent kind of across this bigger region with the other partners. Um, so yeah, the, it's, it is being well utilized. I think that part of the issue is that just getting the word out and, uh, letting property owners know this is not any kind of, um, enforcement tool. It's strictly to help property owners with, um, getting a sense of what they have on their properties. Um, you know, in terms of potential contaminants is not used by any agency to, to come in later, um, with enforcement actions. So I, I think that there is a bit of education with the community that we are, um, continuously working on. But it is, I think there is a bit of that, um, you know, need for understanding that there, um, this is really a positive grant opportunity versus enforcement.
Okay, okay, um, thank you, Ms. Shaw.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, number five.
Okay, Madam Chair, this one is on the, uh, Flagstaff Regional Plan Update that the county is working with the city on. Melissa, do you have any comments on that?
Just that we are, actually, I do have a question for the commission on this, but also as an update, we are working um, with the city, um, currently doing the snapshot webinars, which are most Mondays at noon, covering a variety of topics that will form the background for the regional plan update, covering everything from population to transportation to natural environment, that kind of thing. Um, we, we do want to ask, um, our, this commission if, um, you would be willing to host another joint city-county meeting specifically to, um, uh, conduct a, um, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. It would need to be noticed as a, as a public hearing. Um, but I, if you recall, we had a joint city-county commission meeting, I think it was back in the summer already. So, um, we are wondering if, and, and the city hosted that last time, if the commission would be willing, if our planning is, county planning is only commission would be willing to host a joint meeting, um, with the city's commission to specifically do that type of analysis. So um, if you had feedback for us as in terms of a potential date and time, we estimate we would need about an hour. I'm seeing some thumbs up, so, um, yeah, would be interested in having your feedback on that, Chair Antivarius, and when that might be a good date or time.
Okay, okay, and I also, on Ms. Shaw, I'm seeing the thumbs up, so I think that we can, uh, say, yes, those, uh, commissioners are interested. I am seeing Commissioner Best with his hand raised. Commissioner Best?
So this would be for the regional plan? Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay. And uh, how would we, what would be appropriate preparation on our part for the meeting? Um, just a review, a personal review of the regional plan, or are you going to work up, um, any issues that the county has now? I'm just wondering how, how much time we need ahead and how, what, what our input and preparation should be as commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Best for that question, and I estimate we would take about an, need about an hour um, for the joint meeting, and we would have a presentation prepared for the commission, um, probably reviewing the regional plan itself, because, uh, this commission does use the regional plan, um, and the goals and policies in it in relation to project approvals. So, um, we would have an online tool and actually run you through an exercise that we could do interactive, um, gather your comments interactively. So, um, there wouldn't be something like a long staff report or anything like that. I think it would be mainly to familiarize yourself with the, the regional plan as a whole, and think about what are the strengths, the weaknesses of the current plan, and then the, um, rather the strengths and, and then, and then the opportunities, um, for the, for a new plan. So, uh, we would prompt you with some specific questions that way.
Okay, so it sounds like it's an introduction rather than something that we need to come, having carefully reviewed the regional plan. It, it's really the start of the process.
It is the start, and, and again, as to, uh, look at the strengths of the current plan, the weaknesses of the current plan, the opportunities for the new one, and then any potential, what we call threats, you know, for the future. So to think about, uh, you know, what we've got today, and, but we would, like I said, we would prompt you with a tool and have an online interactive exercise during the meeting.
Great, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shaw. I, I still think that when I saw the thumbs up, I, I think that that is a, a yes to the question that you asked this commission, if we would be interested in hosting that and participating in it. So I hope your question was, I mean, do you feel your question was answered?
I, I do have one more, uh, just detailed question about when might be a good time, uh, to do that. Um, probably outside of one of your regular meetings.
Okay.
Um, a time and day of the week that might be best. We can, I can get back with you later on that on a separate email if that would work.
Yeah, I think that that would be best now with maybe some proposed dates and times like you've done previously on things. And we can go ahead and move forward with that, in that direction.
Thank you very much. We'll do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and we have item number six, please.
Okay, this is also on the, uh, Utility Scalable Energy Ordinance. As you know, we had a, probably know, we had a open house on February 8th and an advisory group meeting on February 18th. And as you saw earlier, the Rio is scheduled for a hearing with the commission on March 30th. Do you have any further comments on that, Melissa?
Not at this time, Bob. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, for the Board of Supervisors' updates, we don't really have anything on the agenda, uh, currently. Uh, we, we, we are looking at moving the case, the Tall Tales Amendment ahead, but that may have hit some snags. So we'll see what happens on that, but right now there's nothing, uh, on the agenda from the commission. There will be soon, of course, many of these cases will be moving forward to them. And Madam Chair, with that, uh, what we have left is the Commission and Staff Roundtable.
Right, and thank you, Mr. Short. Um, do any of the commissioners or staff um, have any items that they would like to address at this time? We have almost, we have 35 minutes. And, um, Commissioner Best?
I just encourage everybody to, uh, think about attending some of these snapshots of the regional plan at noon on Monday. They're really short. They're like, really, it's, it's like a 15-minute presentation. You can do it while you're eating your lunch. And, uh, it just get, it, there's a lot of good information and, and, uh, a lot of expertise. I mean, the last one had Game and Fish and, um, Jessica Simmons, uh, and other folks talking about, uh, natural resources in the county. Uh, it's, it's a powerful tool, and it doesn't take much time. There's a lot of information, and, and you can ask questions of people who can give you answers. Uh, and unfortunately, there, there's very few people attending, and so it's, I, I hate to see that organization and energy going to waste. Uh, it's not going to waste, but there just aren't many folks in there. And, uh, it's a great resource, so I, I recommend it.
Um, Commissioner Best, could you give the other commissioners and myself direction in, um, how to go about doing that?
I, I bet, um, we could ask Melissa to send out, um, something. You go on to the city website, you sign up, and then you can just click on, uh, you can just click on a link on the website, but I think Melissa could, um, send us something, and these days I'm getting something every Friday or so, or maybe every Monday morning, I'm getting a separate email, maybe because I signed up. And so it reminds me, and I just click on a link and I'm in.
Okay, okay, thank you. And those, that's Monday at noon?
Um, most Mondays at noon, uh, including this one. Uh, we missed, I think we missed this last week, but I believe next week there is one. I can't remember what the subject is, but it, you know, it's, it's very concise. It's very, it's very short. The whole thing's supposed to be over in half an hour, but, but we got players, you know, we, we, we've got people, experts from the city and county to, who can answer questions. And, uh, so I, it's, it's a, it's a really good resource and very efficient.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best, and Ms. Shaw, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Chair Antivarius. I just sent the link uh, in the chat to everyone.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha.
You can, uh, look at that, and then from there, I believe you, yes, uh, you can watch past webinars there. And you can also sign up for the newsletter, and I believe you can register for the the snapshot, uh, regional snapshots there as well. Yes, you can, so, um, thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you. Um, do any other commissioners or staff have any, uh, anything else? Okay, I am not seeing any. It, my clock shows 4:59, let's say 5 o'clock. The public hearing will begin at 5:30. So why don't we take a 30-minute break, and we will reconvene at that time?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Short, this is Chair Antivarius. Are you there and ready to proceed?
Madam Chair, I am ready to proceed. Go ahead.
Okay, then I am going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm going to read the mood, uh, meeting rules and procedures first. Welcome to the February 23rd, 2022 meeting of the Coconino County Planning and zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be polite and courteous. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plot approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact staff at the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. Please mute your speakers and turn off your camera. I would also like to add that the chat button at the bottom of the screen is to be used only for uh, dialogue regarding technical issues. What it is not to be used for is for commenting on the case in any way, shape, or form. Um, with that, thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Short, would you please lead us?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Short. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the January 26th, 2022 minutes. If there are no changes or modifications, we'll go ahead and move, uh, to a motion in a second, please.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Walters and a second by Commissioner Ruggles for approval of the January 26th, 2020, 2022 minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Vice Chair Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Chair Antivarius. I also vote aye. The motion, uh, passes unanimously for the approval of the January 26th, 2022 minutes. The first item on the public hearing, um, agenda is case number ZC dash 21 dash 013. Mr. Short, um, before you begin, I know that you are requesting a content, or recommending a continuance until the May 25th, 2022, uh, meeting. With that, I would ask that your comments be limited to the reasons for the continuance rather than presenting the case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I'll just say this is a request for a zone change from the general zone to resort commercial. It's on 160-acre parcel, and the purpose is for the development of 150-unit recreational vehicle park and resort. In this case, the District Ranger of the Ky-. In this case, the District Ranger of the Kaibab National Forest has provided comments to staff indicating the applicant does not have legal access across the Kaibab National Forest to the subject property. Those comments are in the commission packet. They cite a special use permit from nineteen forty-seven that, and indicate that that access easement was only for county use, county use only and not for private property use, which means that none of the properties along Cooper Ranch Road have legal access according to the national forest. With that, staff is recommending a ninety-day continuance until the May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two commission meeting to provide the applicant with time to address this issue. This hearing may be scheduled earlier if the issue is resolved. With that, does the commission have any questions?
Okay, Mr. Short, I'm not seeing any hands raised by the commissioners. What I would like to do, though, is ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative is present tonight, and if you would like to comment on this continuance.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. This is Bernie Correa with Auto Camp, the applicant. And no new information other than what Mr. Short has presented here, working with our various team of consultants to understand the current access situation and confirm legal access in the coming weeks and months. And we look forward to providing you all with an update at the appropriate time and to later presenting the project in a more complete fashion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Correa. Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Correa at this time? Seeing none, let's go ahead and do a motion in second for a continuance, please, to the May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, realizing that it can come back earlier before that if all things have been worked out.
I'd like to make a motion for a continuance of case number ZC dash two-one dash zero-one-three until the May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two commission meeting.
Okay, I will second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Walters, a second by Commissioner Ruggles for continuance of ZC twenty-one dash zero-one-three to the May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Bass?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Chair Aunt Tiveris. I also vote aye. Case ZC twenty-one dash zero-one-three has been continued to the May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty commission hearing. The second item on the agenda tonight is case number CUP twenty-one dash zero-five-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning. And I have for you today case CUP twenty-one zero-five-two. It's the case for stable foundations therapy. The applicant is Lauren Hall, and she owns the property with her husband Nick, both here from Flagstaff. The zoning for the property is AR, that's agricultural residential with a one-acre parcel size minimum. And the subject property is one point zero-four acres. This request is for a conditional use permit for what the zoning ordinance defines as a cottage industry and equestrian center related to the equine therapy business. I have on the screen for you a vicinity map, so here's Highway eighty-nine separating timberline and fernwood areas. And in the fernwood area, here's the subject property amongst other AR zone properties that are developed with single-family residences. And to the east is Coconino National Forest. This is a close-up aerial of the subject property, and I do want to note that the property lines might not be exact from this aerial. But you can see Peaks Parkway Road here. Here's the existing home on the property. And here is an animal barn, and you can see that the neighboring properties are developed with single-family residences. This is a photo of the front of the home, and you can see kind of peeking out from the rear is an existing barn on the property. And this photo is, if you took just a few steps forward and to the right from the last photo, this is showing where you can see the barn related to the proposed use. There's also a portable toilet that's screened with a fence here and designed for a business, the business on the fence for the property. For some background, this case was originally scheduled for the November two thousand and twenty-one commission hearing. And staff found that the horse barn was located eighteen feet, ten inches from the property line, where the requirement for animal keeping accessory structures is actually fifty-five feet from the property line. So the case was continued until tonight so that the applicant could get a variance from that setback from the Board of Adjustments. And the applicant did get that variance on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. The Board of Adjustment unanimously approved the variance for that setback reduction. For some detail on the proposed use, so it is something that's defined by the zoning ordinance as the cottage industry and equestrian center, but it is for equine therapy. And the business is run by the property owner, who is an occupational therapist. She has two volunteers that would walk clients on horseback in the backyard for rehabilitation for many different diagnoses. The hours of operation would be from eight AM to six PM. And one family at a time would occupy the property for hour-long sessions. And there's a small office inside the barn that's used for consultations. So here's the site plan. Again, we see the house in the barn. There's an ADA ramp to help with some of the clients using the equine therapy. And this is a floor plan, so you can see the barn overall is a thousand twenty square feet. There's this small waiting area or consultation area, three earthen floor stalls, and then storage area that's not related to the equine therapy business. And down here, we have some photos. So the, the barn door is shown at the top of the floor plan here. This is a view looking from the barn door into the stalls. And this is looking into that office area. There also, and not shown on the site plan, is an auxiliary restroom area. So you can see the portable toilet that we saw in the other photos. This is taken from looking between the residents in the barn south towards where we have the portable toilet, and then there's a hand washing station. So it is screened from neighbors. And Planning and Zoning staff did discuss with building staff and environmental quality staff whether or not these things could be approved through permits. And they are something that does require permits, and staff is recommending retroactive permits from those divisions for approval of this auxiliary restroom. As far as citizen participation, the applicant held a meeting and invited neighbors within three hundred feet of the subject property to give any comments that they had on the request. And there weren't any comments. Staff also reached out to neighbors with letters within that three hundred feet notification area and posted a sign on the property, and staff did not receive any comments. What I wanted to show you on this slide is the cottage industry standards. So on this table, you can see that all of the different requirements of the cottage industry are met. The entrepreneur resides on the property and has under three employees. The cottage industry occupies less than fifty percent of the combined floor area of the home and the accessory structure. There is a sign that's under six feet in height and under six square feet in area. There's adequate parking, and the cottage industry fronts on a county-maintained road. And also, as far as cottage industry is required, that impacts do not exceed a typical single-family residential use. And as proposed and conditioned, staff finds that the use would not create any impact above and beyond a typical single-family residence. And just for a general overview of the equestrian center use, the zoning ordinance doesn't have specific criteria like we just saw with the cottage industry. It's something that the commission decides on a case-by-case basis based on the context of the use in the neighborhood. Some typical standards that the commission has put on the equestrian center use are sound mitigation, manure management, dust mitigation, those sorts of conditions. And staff has recommended conditions that would mitigate all of these typical impacts of an equestrian center. As far as the applicable long-range plans for the area, so the comprehensive plan and the Doni Park Timberline Fernwood area plan apply to this area. Both of those plans support home occupations and cottage industries that are consistent with the neighborhood character. The comprehensive plan also supports economic development that's consistent with environmental and public health. And those are the applicable goals and policies that staff found related to this use. And staff finds that as conditioned and as proposed, that the use is conforming to the applicable long-range plans. So the commission has to make four findings of fact in order to approve this case, and staff has gone through and detailed staff's response to these. In the staff report, they pretty much echo what was previously discussed on the last slide, but I'm happy to go through any other findings of fact if the commission has any questions on them. But for now, if the commission can make all the required findings of fact, staff is recommending approval of case CUP twenty-one zero-five-two subject to the eleven conditions of the staff report, and I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, I am not seeing any hands raised or anyone unmuting. So I'm going to say that no, the commissioners don't have any questions. I would like to ask, is it Joy Gabbard? If you could please turn your camera off? Ms. Gabbard? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant, I now at this time, I would like to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to address the case. And Ms. Hall, I see you have unmuted. Before you begin, I would like to ask that you state your name and address for the record. And I would also like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions. With that, please go ahead.
My name is Lauren Hall. My address is one-two-one-one-five North Peaks Parkway. I definitely agree with all of the staff recommendations, and I thank Zach and the county for, for working with us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall. Do any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Hall at this time? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, either unmute or press the raise your hand button, and I will call on you. Okay, I am not seeing anyone. With that, I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it at the commission level. Commissioner Burton, would you please start the discussion this evening?
I don't see a problem. I think it's pretty straightforward, and I think it's a good service that's offered to the community.
I, I'm sorry, I forgot to unmute. Vice Chair Walters?
I can make the findings. I think it's well-presented, and it looks like a good plan. The only thing I'd like to add to the applicant is, is please keep up all your landscaping to make it a little bit easier for your neighbors and, and more palatable. But I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruggles?
There we go. Okay, I agree with my fellow commissioners so far on this. I think it's an excellent plan. And I also can make the findings for approval of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Bass?
I also can make the findings. It looks like a good addition to our community healthcare network for certain people, and I, I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Clifford?
I can make, excuse me, I can make the findings to, to approve this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clifford. And this is Vice Chair Aunt Tiveris. I also can make the findings to approve this, and I would just like to add that I concur with Commissioner Bass's comments that this is a very welcome addition to the, to the community. So I'd like to say thank you to the applicant for your willingness to do this and step up and fill this need. With that, we're going to go ahead. I'll take a motion in a second, please.
Make a motion for approval of CUP dash two-one dash zero-five-two as presented.
A second.
Okay, I had a motion by Vice Chair Walters for approval of CUP twenty-one dash zero-five-two and a second by Commissioner Bass. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Bass?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
This is Vice Chair Aunt Tiveris. I also vote aye. CUP twenty-one dash zero-five-two is approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is CUP twenty-one zero-seven-two.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning and Zoning staff, and this case is CUP twenty-one dash zero-seven-two. It's the Mormon Lake Transfer Station CUP. The property owner of the subject property is Mormon Lake Properties from Phoenix. The applicant is Caroline Campbell of Phoenix. The existing zoning is G, that's the general zone. It's a ten-acre minimum, typically a single-family residential and agricultural zone that also allows through conditional use permits, a number of quasi-public type uses. The subject property is nine point seven-three acres in size. And this request is for a conditional use permit for continued use of a solid waste transfer station. This is a vicinity map, so this is southwest Mormon Lake. You can see this hatched red area is resort commercial zone. That's the Mormon Lake Lodge Resort. Everything in G is that ten-acre minimum zone. And adjacent to the subject property here, our property is in the AR zone. That's a one-acre minimum, single-family residential zone. And here is sort of a zoom-in aerial of the subject property, so you can see right here, this is the property. The current solid waste transfer station use is occupying the, excuse me, the southwest corner, and you can see the residences adjacent to the subject property. And here is Mormon Lake Lodge here on northwest of the subject property. This, this is a site plan from two thousand and sixteen, so from Mormon Lake Road, you would drive up Clover Drive. And we have compacted aggregate base gravel around where dumpsters are stored for the use. And then here, you can sort of see, this is where there's an existing solid six-foot wood fence around the transfer station area. And you can also see this dark dotted line is where there's some flood zone north of that. And here are some photos of outside the transfer station area, so you can see this solid fence there. And you can see from this picture, dumpsters are enclosed inside that solid fenced area. I did want to give you some background. So this is a slide actually from the two thousand and sixteen PowerPoint presentation. So the Mormon Lake area doesn't have a municipal waste service, and instead residents dump trash and large dumpsters at the transfer station where the operator then takes that to a landfill. At the transfer station where the operator then takes that to a landfill. Uh, before twenty sixteen, uh, Public Works here on the north side of Mormon Lake. So this is Lake Mary Road and red here and then yellow. Uh, sorry, Lake Mary Road here, Mormon Lake Road in yellow here. This is where the Public Works formerly operated a transfer station and after twenty sixteen. Mormon Lake Properties uh moved the transfer station here and began operating it here. On the southwest portion of Mormon Lake, adjacent to the lodge area. And for some more background, in twenty sixteen, the conditional use permit approved by the commission had some. Conditions, one that the transfer station area be consistent with the approved site plan. So. Having all the waste located within the six foot solid fenced area, there were days of operation and hours of operation. Thursdays and Sundays from eight AM to three PM. Uh, there were also some waivers approved, a paving waiver. So instead of full paving. The commission approved compacted A B in lieu of that. And a landscaping waiver for vegetation, just a strip buffering. The residential area from the transfer station use rather than the full landscaping requirement. That would typically be required from the zoning ordinance. As far as compliance with those conditions of approval, the hours of operation and days of operation condition was met. Installation of the compacted A B was met. There, when staff visited for posting the property, some waste was outside of the fenced area. Excuse me, if, if somebody from the public could mute for a moment. Until we get to the section where the chair will call on you. Thank you. Um, you could see there were some piles of waste outside of the fenced area. Here, there's a dilapidated manufactured home outside of. That area, so that condition was not met. And also uh, having the landscape buffer between the transfer station and the. AR zone properties, that condition was not met either when staff visited. Staff did have a call with the property owner of Mormon Lake Lodge, uh, the week of February seventh. And the owner described that the piles out there were for burns. Related to Mormon Lake Fire Department's doing exercises. And otherwise materials would be stored in approved areas related to the RC, the resort commercial zone. Master plan, places where storage is permitted, related to the lodge activities. So staff has proposed a condition that would allow for two burns on the property per year. Because it is a pretty well open area and probably a good place for these type of exercises to be had. Uh, so long as smoke impacts are mitigated and so far as. The Arizona Department of Environmental Quality approves burn permits for that use. The property owner also noted that some of the vegetation was installed. After twenty sixteen, but it was destroyed from some snowstorms. And during the phone call with staff, the owner agreed to phase in some of that. Vegetative, vegetative buffer in the future, moving forward. Uh, staff also did notice that there were, there, there's a three strand barbed wire fence around the property. And the urban wildlife planner noticed that there were. Uh, some areas where the fence had come in disrepair. Because the Mormon Lake area is heavily traversed by wildlife, including elk and deer. Staff is recommending a condition that the applicant property owner worked with the urban wildlife planner. To remove or retrofit just uh, certain portions of that fence, especially those that have come into disrepair. So that wildlife can move more freely through the area. And the property owner did know that some work could be phased in over time on that end. As far as citizen participation, staff did send out letters to property owners within three hundred feet. That was the notification area for this case. Staff also posted a sign on the property inviting people to this hearing. Uh, staff didn't get any comments on the use uh, this time. For some general analysis, I just wanted to go through that. Impacting neighboring residential properties is something that can happen with this type of use adjacent to residential. But staff does find that uh, that the requirements. That were discussed in previous slides, uh, being phased in would better mitigate the impacts from neighboring property owners. And also this use is just generally invaluable to the Mormon Lake residents. There's not any other sort of facility in the area that would accept waste. For transfer and staff is unaware of any other way of removing solid waste from the area other than. For people to take it to the city of Flagstaff's landfill. So generally, this is a good use that's needed by the residents. There are four findings of fact that the commission needs to find in order to approve the case and I've detailed those. In the staff report and I'm happy to take any questions on those, but staff is able to make all those required findings of fact. And so if the commission can make all the required findings of fact, staff recommends approval of case twenty one. Dash zero, seven, two, subject to the eleven conditions of the staff report. And I'm happy to take any questions from the commission at this time.
Okay, Ms. Uh, Vice Chair Walters, uh, before you begin, uh, Vice Chair. I would like to ask Nancy Harrison Williams to please turn your camera off. Thank you. Okay, uh, Vice Chair Walters, please go ahead.
Mr. Schwartz, I'd like to ask a couple of questions here. Um, in your pictures that you show us, it's very um. Disturbing that it, it, it has so much trash and then there's that old trailer that's there. As well as the, the fences being down, is, is it um. This is that Mormon Lake Lodge is just not keeping this up and they're resisting to, to work with us on this or what, what are you finding?
Uh, Madam Chair, Commissioner Walters, uh, I think that the owner of the property was maybe not aware. Uh, you know, he doesn't deal with the day to day operations of, of this resort always. He. Does manage other resorts as well. Um, I think that after discussing with the property owner. That he understands the issues involved and I think that he seemed willing to um. Tried to mitigate those issues and, and that's, that's all I've really been able to uh, discover at this time.
Well, at least from my standpoint, I, I think that this really needs to be cleaned up and addressed quickly. And it needs to be maintained. I understand it's a, a great service to the community. It, it also benefits the lodge in, in a great way. They're probably the biggest single user. So I'd really like to see them work with us to get this, this taken care of and keep it up. Cause it's, it's a pretty nice area out there except for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, Commissioner Best.
I think I have the similar concerns. Um. Do, do we have an agreement that the defunct trailer will disappear?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Best, my understanding is that that is. Possibly something that the lodge wants to store. I, I didn't get into a whole lot of. In-depth conversation with the property owner and I, I did see that the applicant seems to be online with us tonight and maybe. Uh, she could help us out a little bit with that, but at the very least, if not removing from the Mormon Lake area completely and. You know, taking it to the landfill, I think it would be moved into a place that's approved on the lodge property to have some storage. That's maybe, you know, not within floodplain areas and not with um. That's on screen storage where people in the residential area could see. So uh, that's my understanding so far, but I do think that the applicant could um, give you some more information.
And a follow-up question, the pile of what. Looks like trash above that, that, uh, that is a burn pile for. Uh, the fire department out there, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's what's the owner of Mormon Lake Properties discussed with me.
And is that, I'm a little confused because it doesn't look like. Uh, forest slash, it looks like construction debris. Is this a training exercise or is this just a way for the applicant to. Get rid of stuff and it sits out there all year until they burn it?
My understanding from speaking to the property owner is that. I had just come at the wrong time and that these are not typically there and that. The, the exercise happens shortly after my leaving and that it's not something that happens very often.
What does, i- i- is there a pile of debris that over time. Uh, accumulates there over a long period of time? Because it certainly is unsightly and not consistent with that beautiful area out there.
Sure. I, I guess what I can tell you is that to be consistent with the approved site plan from twenty sixteen, any sort of. Uh, construction waste or any sort of other trash. Would be located within the transfer station area, so only the fenced area and, and nowhere outside of that area. And I think that, especially after having discussed with the property owner. At length, uh, during that week of February seventh, that the property owner is aware of that and has plans to. Remove these piles from where we're seeing them currently into places that are approvable. So they wouldn't be there very often, only perhaps. For short amounts of time related to the fire department exercise as conditioned by staff, which is why staff. Is recommending that we do temporary use permits for them so that we can document how long they're, they are there. And keep them only there for a short amount of time, um, have the exercise happen and then only, that would only happen maybe a couple of times a year.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Um, Mr. Schwartz, this is um Chair Aunt Taveras. This is kind of a continuation of Vice Chair Walters and Commissioner Best's uh, questions, comments. I'm reading. Um. Item number two, under the staff recommended conditions of approval and it says all waste material and secondhand material stores shall be removed. From outside of the fence transfer station area on the subject property within six months of this approval. So if I'm understanding this condition properly. In six months, this is, this piece of, this property is not going to look like this.
Madam Chair, yes, that was the intent.
Oh, okay. Okay, gotcha. So I think the, the reason I was following up with that on. Was the kind of the timeframe that Vice Chair Walters was getting at. Which is we need, we need to clean it up and you know, when, when are we going to clean it up? So that's how come I wanted to point that out. That in six months, this is going to look like a completely different place.
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. I probably could have been more clear about the timeline.
Okay, no, you're good. I was just reading through the conditions as we are going through this. Um, do any of the commissioners have any additional questions for Mr. Schwartz at this time? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask if the applicant. Or the applicant's representative would like to address the commission this evening. I would also like the applicant to state their name and address for the record. And I would further ask if the applicant has read. And agrees with the staff recommendation for conditions. And with that, uh, please address the commission.
My name is Caroline Campbell. My address is nineteen seventy one Mormon Lake Road. Mormon Lake, Arizona. Eight, but eight, six, zero, three, eight. Um, I just want, had a few things. All the piles that you are seeing in the pictures are gone. Everything is pretty much, everything's cleaned up except for that trailer. You've been out. Um. And we are willing to work with you guys on this, but we do take a hit on. All this, we lose about six thousand to seven thousand dollars a year. Doing this service for the community and we originally, when we started. It was for the community when you guys chose to take the one out. On this uh, north end of Mormon Lake Road.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Campbell. On, do, and I also would like to thank you for the clean, for the cleanup that you have done. Thus far. Uh, do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant at this time? Uh, Vice Chair Walters.
This is Campbell. Thank you for cleaning that up so quickly. Um, what is the status and the intention on that trailer?
We are going to be moving it and it's going to take us a little bit of time. We do use it for storage for our resort here. We do have a lot of stuff inside there. Right now with all, with the weather that we have. We've been doing the best that we can to get everything cleaned up and moved out of trailers so we can move it.
I understand. So do, do you have a timeframe that you're looking at to get that moved?
I'm doing it as, as soon as we are able to, as far as weather, we did get a lot of snow up here. Just today, actually, about a foot and a half just today.
Well, I, I can understand that and I say good for the.
As soon as it melts and we're able to uh, move snow out of the way and get things. I would say probably early spring.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and Commissioner Best, I see your hand raised.
I have no more questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would ask if there is, I, I would now like to ask if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission on this case this evening. If so, please unmute or raise your hand and I will call on you. Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close it to the public and open it at the discussion, excuse me, at commission level. Uh, Commissioner Burton.
Um, I think my concerns have been addressed by the applicant. If the piles are already cleaned up and there's a definitive plan for the trailer, then um. Then I can support the application.
Thank you. Vice Chair Walters.
I think that, that um, you know, I, I really liked that they jumped in there and cleaned up that, that stuff that was out there. I, I understand they can't get to the trailer right now and. Obviously, everybody knows how much weather we've got up here right now. I, I like that it's a community service. I don't like that the, the lodge has to pay so much for it, but. I don't know any way to address that. I think it's also a pretty good service for the lodge. And, and you know, been dealing with a lodge for about forty years. But thank you and I can make the findings.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Walters. Um, Commissioner Ruggles.
Hey, uh, I very much appreciate the applicant's assurances on um. How the uh, the trailer will be dealt with and I can fully understand that. This time of year and with our recent snow that, uh, yeah, it might, might take a little time that uh. Spring and we may get more of this, so it may be delayed somewhat, but nevertheless, uh, those concerns that I had. Relative to this and the piles of trash have been addressed. I also have a great appreciation for the uh, community service that this provides. I visited a site for the first time around on this use permit and uh. That was pretty much a no-brainer because of the community service that it provides. So uh, I can make the findings uh, for approval of this uh, conditional use permit.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Commissioner Taveras, you, you're Chairman Taveras, you were muted there. Can you say again?
Um, you know what? I'm, I'm actually not muted, so I'm thinking you guys can't hear me, right?
We can hear you now. It looked like you were going in and out of, of muting.
Okay.
Do you by chance have anything? Do you by chance have anything accidentally depressing this, the spacebar on your keyboard?
No, I don't. On, I don't know what's going on. It's possible that it is operator error. It is me. It is technology. On, so I'll leave it at that. But if we can all hear each other now, I think we're good to go on. So Commissioner Best, you are next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I can make the findings. I think we've worked some things out. One question I have on page thirty-six in the report. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong here. I think I've got the right one. We've got a couple of them floating here, the old one and the new one. The condition eleven says, uh, permit to expire in five years on January fifth, twenty twenty-six. Do we want to make that twenty twenty-seven?
Yes, yes, we do, Commissioner Best. Let's modify that.
Okay, and I'm, uh, I'm glad that we are going to see this in five years and hopefully we'll have things worked out. That's a beautiful area out there. And I, I'm sure the the applicant and the neighbors all want to keep it that way. So, uh, sounds like we're making progress and I can support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Best. Commissioner Clifford?
Uh, my concerns were addressed and I can make the findings to approve it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this is Chair Auntiveras. Um, I concur with my fellow commissioners on being able to make the findings to approve it. And I also would like to thank Ms. Campbell for the cooperation on, in getting things cleaned up thus far, because this does meet a great need for the community. And so thank you. With that, let's go ahead and move to a motion in a second, please.
Hey, I'm, I would like to go ahead with a motion on this. I move for approval of case CUP twenty-one dash zero seven-two. As stated, with the date corrected.
A second though.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Ruggles and a second by Vice Chair Walters for approval of CUP twenty-one dash zero seven-two with a modification to condition number eleven. Uh, changing the date to January fifth, twenty twenty-seven. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
Okay, and this is Chair Auntiveras. I also vote aye. Case number CUP twenty-one dash zero seven-two has been proved, has been approved unanimously. And the final item on the agenda tonight is case number CUP twenty-one dash zero seven-three.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. CUP twenty-one seventy-three is an application for renewal for an RV park. It has ten spaces, a caretaker's quarters, and they would like to modify it to add five storage spaces. The applicants are Joel and Frances Cabard from Peoria, Arizona. The owner is Four J's Family Trust. This parcel is two point zero eight acres in the planned community zone with CH ten thousand standards applied. To give you an idea of where this is, you can see the subject property highlighted in yellow here. Uh, this is right on the western, I'm sorry, the eastern tip of Belmont. There are actually no more parcels beyond this uh, in this little strip in between Route sixty-six and the I forty. Um, and we'll zoom in in a moment so you can see that more clearly. Uh, but just down the road over here, you can see the residential begin. Um, and again, between I forty and Route sixty-six, we have more commercial industrial uses. Here you can see our aerial photo of the site. Um, this is a historic RV park and they're hoping to add the storage spaces along the back here. Um, these other buildings, these cabins are no longer in use. Uh, and this large garage here is for personal use for the applicant. You'll also notice that there is a manufactured home on the property, um, which is the caretaker's quarters. To give some background, uh, this RV park is historic. Most of the cabins were built in the sixties along Old Route sixty-six. And it was featured in the nineteen sixty-nine film Easy Rider. It was closed for about thirty years before the first conditional use permit was approved in nineteen ninety-seven. Uh, this was before the current applicants purchased the property, from my understanding. Um, and again, the cabins and historic buildings are not being used. The, uh, property is only being used for RV storage currently and a temporary RV occupancy. You can see here, uh, this is the view from I forty. And if somebody could mute their microphone, please? I'm hearing somebody from the public with their microphone unmuted.
Yes. Um, Jenny Berryhill, if you can hear me, could you please mute your, thank you so much. Um, Ms. Bingham, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Antiveras. Uh, you can see here, this is the view from Route sixty-six. This is kind of the end of Route sixty-six. If you drive down for a little ways until you can see the pavement has turned into concrete. Uh, it's a very cute, historic-looking place. Uh, from my approximation, this is about where the storage spaces would go along the backside of the property. There was one off-site RV hookup that we could pretty clearly tell wasn't within the property boundaries. Again, because this is a historic site, um, things have gotten a little hazy over, you know, the thirty or forty years this has been in operation. The applicant was willing to work with us and was able to get that removed. Uh, during our citizen participation, I had one person call to request the site plan, but no public comments were received on this project. Staff's analysis is that RV storage isn't allowed use in the CH ten thousand zone. So it would make sense to be able to add this on to their current conditional use permit. All other uses on the property have been previously approved. Uh, this is a great source of temporary housing. Uh, they offer month-to-month RV rental. And the site has been well-maintained for many years. Here are the findings of fact. Um, and if the commission can make the findings a fact, we are suggesting approval, uh, with the following conditions. I have them up on my screen for people to view. I'm happy to flip back and forth. There are two pages of them. And with that, uh, staff recommends approval and I'm happy to go back to any slides if anyone would like to view anything.
Kelly, I do have a question for you.
Sure, Commissioner Ruggles?
Um, in looking at the satellite views, uh, I noticed that on the, uh, or at the northeast corner of the property that there appears to be, uh, buildings and, uh, I'm not too sure what else under the trees along there. I wondered, uh, did you note that, uh, when you visited the site? And my question is, is any of that related to, uh, the, uh, the RV, uh, campground?
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I did see that. Um, I did not go into that building. I am not sure exactly what it's currently being used for and if it is a part of the site. Again, then some of these are, are historic. It's a little difficult to tell. Uh, but what was your question?
The reason, the reason I ask is, um, is it related to the operation, uh, of this, um, uh, site to? Um, the other thing is that property to the east is part of the right-of-way for I forty. Uh, I know you addressed the encroachment onto the Route sixty, the old Route sixty-six right-of-way. But, uh, in looking at this, I also noted that there's a power line easement uh, that parallels I forty that comes up to that point also. So my question is, is it related to anything, uh, for the, that the applicant is doing or is it, uh, something that, uh, belongs to APS?
That's something that I'll let the applicant address. I was unable to figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Vice, Vice Chair Walters?
Um, I remember quite a bit of the history on this, this particular operation. Um, they did encroach into the ADOT. They did encroach into the, the easement for the utility lines and they were also encroached into the Forest Service property in the past. Um, I would like staff to assure us that, that the property boundaries are going to be the boundaries for this operation in the the buildings that are shown outside of the property line on this aerial and site plan right now are, are going to be removed because I do believe they're part of this operation. But we need to clean this up. My other concern is is on the recommendation number six, landscaping waiver. If we're going to have a bunch of storage units in that bare area there, which I do believe is the utility easement across there, then those need to be shielded in some manner with some landscaping. And I don't think that's onerous. That's
Thank you for that comment. Thank you. Uh, so to address that, um, I would like to remind the commissioners that um, our parcel viewer is not always one hundred percent accurate. So what you're seeing on the screen is an approximation, but it's not the exact property lines. And the only way to tell for sure what would be exactly in the property lines and what is not, is to require a survey. Staff did not feel comfortable requiring a survey for something that was already approved by the commission. But if the commission would like to require a survey and a continuance, that could be something that, uh, could be discussed.
Okay, I, I've got a, an additional comment for you on that. One of the things that, uh, is very easy to do in determining where the property lines are, uh, the GIS data gives you some very accurate information on that. However, in order to use that without, uh, the benefit of a, uh, survey, simply a GPS with the current accuracy they have will give you a, um, pretty good idea. If you take the coordinates off the GIS data and go onsite to locate the property line or the corners of the property, it is, it is very easy to do. I have done this in the past, uh, when going out to sites uh, with staff, uh, very often is not necessary. It's been quite some time since I've done that, but nevertheless, uh, I have a GPS that I carry, uh, on occasion for exactly this reason. So that, um, if there is some discussion about it, uh, then, uh, yes, you've got enough information that says, uh, yeah, we, we'll need a survey, but, uh, I, I just, uh, feel it is necessary to state that at this point.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. Um, okay, Vice Chair Walters, your hand is still up. Do you have additional comments?
I do. Based on the information that I'm, I'm seeing and hearing now, I'm not sure that we're ready to make a decision on this case. I think that there needs to be some more investigative work done and, and brought back to us. So I'm recommending a continuance.
Um, and Vice Chair Walters, just so I'm understanding on your concern on that, is that because you feel the boundary lines have not been definitively identified?
In, in the past, when they, when they came before us in the past, I remember that the, there was units that were outside of the property lines, both on ADOT and on the forest. And, and I don't want to just keep, um, kicking the can down the road. I'd like to, to fix this now before we move ahead for, for another approval.
Okay, and it, it might be, um, actually, if we look and I, and I'm sure the other commissioners know this, but on condition number five, this use permit shall not be subject to renewal. So, uh, we do need to get this right now on, because it looks like this is one, I mean, of course, we could, we could modify that. Um, but we will get into those, those comments at, at discussion level, okay? Um, Commissioner Best, your hand is raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the benefit of the applicant, we might want to out, outline how a conditional use uh, permit works, uh, when it fails and when it's conditioned, because the applicant should have that knowledge so that they may come forward and say, yeah, let's continue this. Uh, basically, if, if this is voted down, the applicant has to wait a year to come back. If it's continued, then the applicant could come back in a month. Uh, and, and finish this up. But it's important that the applicant understand that, uh, if I've explained it well enough and council agrees, uh, great. If, uh, anybody else wants to jump in, but let's make sure the applicant knows what's going on.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Best. And you did do an excellent job of laying that out. On Commissioner Ruggles, your hand is up. Please go ahead.
Uh, yes, uh, just one item that's a, essentially a point of information from Ms. Bingham. The property to the east is, uh, is actually right-of-way for I forty. There, it is not Forest Service, uh, property as is shown on the site plan that we have in the packet. The status of that probably changed, uh, from Forest Service to, uh, the, uh, right-of-way for I forty back, uh, oh, during the planning stages, uh, for I forty. Uh, that, I, I didn't have the time today to check on that, to document it. But the GIS data very clearly shows that the border line, the bordering property to the east is the right-of-way for I forty.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. There was some question about that. I had done some digging, but that is very helpful.
I think that our G, GIS data is, uh, tends to be pretty, pretty accurate in terms of, uh, what property we're dealing with and who owns it and where the property lines are. And the, uh, the coordinates, uh, uh, on the GIS mapping data are, uh, very clear and very easy to pull up also. So just, just a matter of going forward and helping out.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. On Commissioner Best, your hand is still raised. Do you have any additional comments at this time?
I, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would like now to ask that the applicant or the applicant's representative address the commission on this case. First, please state your name and address for the record. I would also like to ask if you have read the staff report and if you agree with the conditions. And I also would like to ask you to address the comments from the commissioners regarding the boundary lines of the property. Ms. Bingham, do you see the applicant or the applicant's representative on this, on, on the participation list? Aha, is it? Let's see, Ms. Gabbert?
Yes.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record. I would like to ask if you have read the staff report, if you agree with the conditions. And I would also like to ask you to address the comments that have been made regarding the boundary lines from the commissioners this evening.
My name is Frances Gabbert. One oh five two
My name is Francis Gabbard, 10520 West Route 66 Belmont. I approve, I have written the... What'd you say, Beth? I'm sorry, I have a cold. The conditions. And since we have owned this property for 22 years, what one of the commissioners is talking about is a building that's off-site. That is our waterhouse, and that has been there from day one. I don't know how that happened or why it happened, but that's what that is. It's a waterhouse. And somebody mentioned that, you know, it should be taken away. Well, we can't really take away the water for the park. And then as far as the boundary lines go, all we went off of is what it is when we bought it. So I'm not sure why there's an issue with it now when we've had a condition. It's had a conditional use permit for years, and now all of a sudden, there's a problem with the boundary lines. You know, and as far as the power lines go, APS comes out once a year, and as long as we give them access to get in and do their trimming and whatever work needs to be done in that area, they are good with that. So that's all I have to say right now.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gabbard. Do any of the commissioners have questions for Ms. Gabbard regarding the questions that were... the comments and concerns and questions? Commissioner Ruggles.
Yeah, just one, well, a couple of things. One's a point of information. The APS easement for their power line is not an issue. I'd like to assure the applicant of that. The other thing is that we have had situations similar to your pump house for water supply. And in cases like that, we have asked the applicants to address the situation with ADOT. And we have had a couple of cases. One of them happens to be the marijuana dispensary on A-9, where their septic system was in a similar situation. It is well into the right-of-way for Highway 89. And they approached ADOT about it for some permitting that was required by us. And ADOT did not have a problem with the location of it. And if that is the case, that that has been there that long, and it is your water supply, I would think ADOT would be amenable to approving the location of that, even though it is encroaching onto their right-of-way. This has not been as big a problem as you may think. And the other thing is, it may save you from the liability of having something like that that is encroaching on right-of-way that is owned by the state. It's far better to sort it out now than to go down the road a number of years and have this come up and literally bite you, or us for that matter. So just something for you to consider.
Yeah.
We'll move forward with the discussion on issues that Vice Chair Walters has brought up.
Right, and with that, I see Vice Chair Walters' hand raised. Please proceed.
Ms. Gabbard, I would highly encourage you to check out your boundaries and to get that building easement with ADOT cleared up. At this point, I can't approve this, and I don't want to deny you and have you not be able to operate for a year. So I would really like for you to ask for a continuance so that, you know, we can sort through a few of these issues and get this thing set up right before you're going forward. I know how you bought it, and I understand what you had to say. I'm just saying that just because you bought it like that and they represented it like that doesn't make it right.
Well, I was told that that wasn't on ADOT property last time we went through this, five years ago.
By a surveyor?
By ADOT themselves.
Well, I need to have survey proof provided to the county of what we're looking at here, that everything's onsite, that you have an easement for that building, and that it's cleaned up. We've gone through this a couple of times, and now this is our last chance.
What do you mean, you've gone through what? What, what have you gone through? What the... You've gone through what with us a couple of times?
The conditional use permit for this, for the site has come up a couple of times, and we've heard before that there was problems in the past. And that's what I'm addressing now, and that's what I'd like to take care of now.
Okay. I don't know what, I don't know what problems came up, but that's okay. All right. Well, I guess I need, is my next move is to get with ADOT?
Well, your next move is to ask us for a continuance so you have some more time so that nobody votes against your RV park at this point.
All right, well, then I need a continuance.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Walters, and thank you, Ms. Gabbard. Ms. Bingham, I would like to ask you at this time, if you fully understand the questions and concerns that have been brought up at the hearing this evening, and if so, if you can work with the applicant to get those cleared up.
Yes, Chair Antiveras, I fully understand your questions. I will be working on that, and Mrs. Gabbard will work on this together, and hopefully, we can come back with something that is approvable.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bingham and Ms. Gabbard. That's why I asked Ms. Bingham if she would help you with this. I know that you are doing a good job, and I know, and I feel like you were doing your absolute best to come before the county and to do this right. As a commission, we do have to be certain that what we are approving is right, that we are approving something where the boundary lines are very clear. It's not only for your good, but it's for the county's good as well. And that's how come I wanted, I just want to assure you that Ms. Bingham is going to work through this with you. So at this time, it does look you have requested a continuance. At this time, I would like to ask you if you have any questions or concerns at this time. But please know that you will be working hand-in-hand with Ms. Bingham as you go through this, because she understands what the commission is asking for. I know this can get confusing sometimes, and that's why I just want to assure you that you're going to be working with Ms. Bingham. You won't have to do this on your own, kind of grasping in the dark. So do you have any questions at this time?
Well, my husband just told me that there is an ADOT marker on the other side of our fence, but it's up above between our fence and the 40.
Okay, and Ms... Okay, and Ms. Gabbard, I do appreciate that information that your husband has provided. Like Vice Chair Walters has said, it probably would be in your best interest to ask for a continuance. These questions, kind of, they're out there, and we just simply need them confirmed, like we need Ms. Bingham to go and confirm these questions. So really, at this time, I'm just going to go back and I want to just recap. You have asked the commission for a continuance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bingham, what do you feel is an appropriate timeframe to get these issues cleared?
Chair Antiveras, I might recommend at least two months. Mr. Short has any opinion on the time this might take for a project like this? I would love to hear his thoughts.
Okay, Mr. Short?
Yes. Madam Chair, yes, I would just like to make it, you know, very clear that we determined... I remember before we looked at the ownership of the property in that kind of no-man's-land right there. And it was, I understand Commissioner Ruggles' discussion on that, but it was a little unclear because there's a I-40 right-of-way that goes through the national forest, and then there's also a county right-of-way at the bottom. So I would say probably at a minimum 90 days, maybe longer, because they will have to get a survey, and sometimes it's difficult to get surveys these days. So I'd say at a minimum 90 days, possibly 120 days, just to clear all this up. And also, we would work with whatever entity it is that owns that, probably ADOT. I'm pretty sure it's ADOT, and that could all take some time. So I would say 90 to 120 days.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short, and I'm going to concur with your comments. I personally am dealing with, I'm a surveyor, and I was told... I'm sorry, it's me and my mute button again. Mr. Short, I concur with your suggestion that we go 120 days. The reason being is, is I am currently in a situation with a surveyor, and you are 90 days out under the best of circumstances. So could you please look at your calendar and give me the date of the hearing for 120 days out, because we need to continue this to a date certain?
And this is Vice Chair Walters. I'd like to add that they can come back in anytime they get this done. We're just giving, setting a date that's 120 days out.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair, and that is correct.
Madam Chair, that would be June 29 hearing, and I would also make sure that the applicant is clear that if you complete the survey, then we really need a site plan that's based on the survey. And I know that under previous approvals, the caretaker's quarters was approved by the county before I was here, quite a while ago. I'm not sure how long ago that was. So we would also need a site plan based on that survey. Otherwise, we can't really move forward without something, without that type of information.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Short, for that. And Ms. Bingham, will you please take note of Mr. Short's comments right there? So when you are working with the applicant, you can make sure that the applicant understands what is needed once the survey is done, okay?
Thank you, Chair Antiveras. I have been making notes as we speak, and I'm making a list of things that I can send to the applicant, which we will be requiring.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Bingham. I appreciate it. Okay, to keep things in order, I am going to ask, though, if there is anyone in the public that wishes to address... Well, hold on a minute. Hold on, let me back up. If the applicant is asking for a continuance, Mr. Short, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we can move on that without opening it up to public participation, correct?
Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay, so with that, we have, to the commissioners, we have a request by the applicant for a continuance based on conversation with staff. The most reasonable date would be June 29, 2022, with the understanding that if this is, if the work survey, et cetera, is done sooner, we can always come back before that. So with that, I will accept a motion in a second, please.
I would like to make a motion to that effect. I move for a continuance of case number CUP-21-073 until the 29th of June 2022, planning and zoning commission hearing.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Ruggles to continue CUP-21-073 to the June 29, 2022 hearing date. I have a second by Vice Chair Walters. All in favor, please say aye. Commissioner Burton?
Aye.
Commissioner Walters?
Aye.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Aye.
And this is Chair Antiveras, and I also vote aye. Case number CUP-21-073 has been continued to June 29, 2022, with the understanding that if things and issues are cleared prior to that date, it may come back to the commission before that time. Thank you, Ms. Gabbard. Thank you, Ms. Bingham. And I know that you guys will work together to get these issues clarified and cleared up. And the last item on the agenda is the call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to address the commission this evening for items not on the agenda? And seeing none, my clock shows 6:50 p.m., and the meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Goodbye, everyone. I'll see you next month.
Hey, good night, everyone. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
I know.